Welcome to Cornerstones Walking with God equipping class. I am Brian and with me I have Matt.
Hello.
And Scott.
Hey.
And what we're doing in this class is teaching you how to live the basic Christian life. We've built it all around the discipleship pathway, and this is our 11th session overall, and our third session exploring the category of heart work, internalizing and applying what God has said. So let's recap what we've done so far. Scott, can you recap our first session in this category?
Yeah, we talked about how the heart is the real you, how it's the biblical term to describe the inner self. Heart work then is the process of internalizing biblical truth and having our minds renewed with it so that we might put off our old selves and put on our new. And so we talked about how heart work is more than just stopping or fruit stapling, but the, and that this, this process is the transformation that God has called all of us to as we become more like Him.
And then in the second session of this heart work category, we talked about the problem of idolatry in our hearts and the fact that idolatry is self worship rather than God worship. And we talked about the three steps of heart work that address the problem of idolatry, which are identifying self worship, being reminded of gospel truth, and being instructed with gospel commands.
All right, well, in this session, we will look at how living in a fallen world affects our heart work. And here's what we're going to talk about. The difficulties of living in a fallen world, and then three steps we can take to address those difficulties. So last time we saw how deep sin goes in our hearts and what it looks like to deal with it. But that's not the only factor in heart work. There's, there's more, right Scott?
Yeah, so when it comes to internalizing God's truth and seeking to apply it, we have to remember that we not only have fallen hearts, but we're also living in a horrifically fallen world. Right? The application of God's word takes shape in a fallen and broken world. And not only that, but, but all of our behaviors and our thoughts and our emotions are taking place really in this fallen context. And so it's not quite as simple as just dealing with and addressing our fallen hearts as we seek to shape our behaviors, thoughts, and emotions. And so as we seek to internalize and apply God's word, it can be, I think it can be easy to fixate on the part of the problem that's inside of us, on our hearts. But we, we haven't fully appreciated the reality of the situation that our hearts find themselves in until we grapple with the nature of our fallen world and the context this is all taking place in. So in every one of our problems, we can find this kind of complex mix of external suffering and internal sin. It's, it's this really just kind of a wicked, wicked cocktail that spirals us into issues that seem overwhelming and unimaginable. One instance of suffering or one effect of sin may be able to be dealt with on its own, but when the two compound each other over and over and over, we see ourselves becoming lost and confused and searching for answers because our, our circumstances and our suffering and our, our responses or our sin just really combine together. And I think, I think this is what so many different people experience when they experience a downward spiral, right? We, we, we can spiral downward in really any struggle we have. That's not a unfamiliar concept or experience. And it happens because of the combination of our suffering and sin. And while suffering and sin both contribute to our problems, they don't contribute in identical ways. Our suffering provides the occasion for our problems, but our sin provides the content. I mean, I think probably one of the, the analogies that I've heard that I think is find most helpful in thinking about this, it's kind of like if I had a water bottle, right? And if I had a water bottle, took the top off and smashed it, water would come flying out of the bottle, preferably all over Matt, at least at the table.
I like that.
It's a warm day. But, and if, if I smash the water bottle, water came flying all, all over the place. And I asked you, why, why did water spray all over Matt, right? The answer would generally be because you smashed the bottle, right? But there's also kind of a more fundamental reason that water came flying out of the bottle, and that's because there was water in the bottle, right? All, all my smashing can do is bring out what's already in the bottle. If the bottle's full of air, I can smash it all I want, but there's not gonna, Matt's gonna remain completely dry, right? And so the, in the same way, we see how our suffering and our sin, our suffering provides the external pressure, right? The smashing, or our sin kind of provides the content of what's inside. And when the two are combined together, it brings out into the open what previously had maybe just only been in our hearts. And so, but we have to, we have to appreciate the part that each one plays in our struggles and in really our, our need for growth. And, and recognize the, in that sense, kind of fundamental role that suffering, the pressure plays in our struggles. I'm afraid though, that when I talk about suffering, when we talk about suffering kind of in this session, that most people see suffering as the exception in their lives, not as the norm, right? The suffering is like, oh, okay, so like those times when I suffer or when I happen to be suffering. They, they think that, that while this, that might be true when I'm really suffering, most of the time I, I'm not, which I believe actually demonstrates just how unaware we are of the dramatic effects of the fall we deal with every day. Because if we truly are living in a fallen world, then we're experiencing the effects of the fall. We're suffering in real and tangible ways every day. And to, and to acknowledge that is, I, I think maybe biblical Christians at, at times have dismissed that as just victimization, right? And I think it is when it's uncoupled from our accountability and our sin. But to recognize the reality of the fact that no, like there are real effects of the fall that we deal with every single day, and they contribute in significant ways to our struggles and even the, the ways in which we need to change.
Okay, so then what are some of the different ways living in our fallen world makes things harder? What are some of the ways the water bottle gets smashed?
Well, there's all sorts of different ways. I think this helps us appreciate the, just the diversity and kind of consistent nature of it. And we, every one of us suffers from having a fallen body, right? Second Corinthians talks about how our outer self is wasting away because it is, right? In a fallen world, our outer self is, is wasting away. And so we deal with fall, with physical illness that provides, illness of all sorts of different shapes that, that provides pressure to us. We deal with death, right? In our fallen world, death is a guaranteed reality. It's a hallmark of, of all of our lives, both our own death that we have to come to grips with, and the reality that every single person around us will also die in this world, right? That, that we deal with the, the reality of that, not, not to mention other physical disabilities. There's all kinds of disabilities that can make life more difficult or more painful, even make some of the struggles we're experiencing more difficult to deal with. These disabilities can range from learning disabilities to physical disabilities. But when someone has a disability, it can obviously be considered also a form of suffering, all of which happens because of our fallen bodies.
Yeah, and not only that, not only do we have fallen bodies, but we also live in a fallen environment in a lot of ways. We, we know just looking around that the world that we live in is far from perfect. There's natural disasters and pollution. There's a, a limit to the amount of resources that exist on the earth, which is in sharp contrast to the overabundance that existed in paradise with Adam and Eve. There's a difficulty in terms of provision and work. We see a lot of this that really happens at the beginning when sin enters the world. God curses the ground. There's this cursedness of the ground, and there's this difficulty now of work. And we all experience that every single day as we go to work, you know? As you experience that, there's, even if you love your job, even if your job is great, there's a sense of brokenness in the environment that we live in, the world that we live that is a result of really just the fallenness of the world that we live in.
I think some of them are kind of indirect too, a little more ethereal, I think of, of culture, you know, which is, is kind of one of those things that's hard to define, but we all sort of feel it. So that, you know, the, the values, the principles, the expectations, the worldview that any group of people have. And so if that's sort of the way that a group of people kind of look at the world and interpret things and prioritize things, you're gonna have like all these different cultures. You have like big culture, like, like Western culture, and then like American culture, and then also maybe like Christian culture, like smaller subcultures. But that means that we're all a part of this kind of ethereal thing called culture, and it's gonna affect all of us. And so if, if what makes up the values of any given culture is basically what you get when you put together all the people in that culture, like all those hearts together, then in the big cultures we're a part of, and maybe a lot of the small ones too, like the hearts in that, that culture aren't gonna be set on like worshiping God. And they're not gonna be set on like glorifying God and self denial, like Christ-like values. And so that means that then for every one of us, like the, the quote unquote normal like traditions and guidelines and expectations we live with are gonna be ruled basically by like sinful desire and a desire to, to worship self. And that's gonna have its effect on us. Like it's gonna make it harder in some ways for us as we go through our life because we're affected by these sorts of things.
Yeah, and so not only do we suffer from living with fallen bodies, in a fallen environment, and in a fallen culture, but we also suffer from the reality of Satan and demons in our world as well, which I think is important for us to remember. In, Paul wrote to the Corinthians talking about how important it was, about how forgiveness is kind of consistent throughout their, throughout their body. And he says, and he says, "So that we would not be, or so that we would not be outwitted by Satan, for we are not ignorant of his designs." And every time I, I read that, it makes me ask the question, can I say that? Right? Like, can I say, oh, no, this is important because I'm not ignorant that Satan and demon or demons are real and that they have a purpose in our world? I was just, just the other night, one of my, my youngest daughter was crying because, and she was upset, and she was saying things like in her, in her bed. And she was like, ran into her bed, and she was like saying things like, "Nobody ever wants to play with me, ever. They, nobody ever wants to do anything with me," you know? And, and we were, I was helping her see how that's not necessarily true, right? In interpretation, and, and her sister, her older sister was sitting there and, and consoling her as well. And she looks at her and goes, "You know what? It's also important to know, that's not just not true, that's a lie from Satan." And, and you know, like, and she's like, and he wants you to believe that. And it was fascinating to see the gravity that her comment and the impression it made on her sister, right? Because it made her realize, oh, wait, I mean, even just as a, as a kid, but she realized, oh, wait, no, this is serious, right? And then there's a broader battle going on, and it's not just the things I think incorrectly or the ideas I have or the misinterpretation I have, but there's something broader going on. And, and both we need to pray with that expectation and see the world with that expectation as well. And so I think we need to recognize that we suffer in a world that is in many ways ruled by Satan as well.
So there's, we have fallen bodies, we live in a fallen environment, and we have a fallen culture, and there's Satan and demons that are real and a part of our broken world in a lot of ways. There's also the reality of human limitations and imperfections. There's a reality of the fact that other people in our lives have limitations and imperfections that affect us every single day. And sometimes those effects can have, those are significant effects in our lives. We can experience those, those limitations, and they're not necessarily even a result of sin. It's, it can just be the result of just the imperfection of the world we live in. If you have a child who is unable to fully understand your directions, if you have, you know, someone that you work with that is maybe doesn't have the same knowledge or experience you have, or same understanding or ability that you have, and that can make it difficult in a work environment without even sin being involved in that sense. There's difficulties across cultural and language barriers. There's difficulties when you have a professor in college who's not the most gifted lecturer. So there's limitations that other people have that affect us in a very real way. And then there's also our own limitations and imperfections that affects our, our lives constantly. You're finite. You have a limitation in terms of your time and your ability, your intelligence, your physical strength, your energy in a day, right? Like if you, you have 24 hours in a day, but you don't have 24 hours of 100% capacity energy, right? You could get a lot more work done if you were at full energy all day long, but you just aren't. There's limitations in your body. And those are things that can contribute to problems and different elements of suffering in our world.
Yeah, and, and we suffer from others' human, others' limitations and imperfections. And we also suffer because other people sin against us, right? Probably one of the most well-known causes of problems in our lives is the sin of others, right? That's probably the, you know, cause of suffering in our lives that we think about the most, right? Like the ways that people, other people wrong us. Because living among other sinners means that we're going to be sinned against. And not only we're going, we are going to be sinned against in every single relationship we have, right? We don't have a relationship with, nobody we have a relationship with is perfect.
Like you.
Yeah, exactly. If you live in a relationship with me, you're going to be sinned against, unfortunately. Not unrepentantly, but, but truly. And we're, we're gonna be hurt and oftentimes, even really badly by the sin of others. And it's gonna affect our lives and our emotions. And just as forgiveness is the way God has dealt with our sin against Him, right? He's dealt with our sin by forgiving us. It's also the means God has provided for us to deal with when we are sinned, when we are sinned against and suffer as a result. This is why Matthew told Peter, when Peter asked him, "Lord, how often will my brother sin against me and I forgive him?" "As many as seven times," right? And Jesus told him, "I don't say seven times, but 70 times seven." Because he knew how constant this was gonna be in the reality of. I mean, I think even Peter's question, like how many, how often, seven times? I, I exposes that he had a, a very small appreciation for the magnitude of ways we sin against each other and are, and are sinned against. And that's not to mention even just finally, just that sometimes we suffer under the hand of a sovereign God and don't exactly know where from, right? I mean, I think of the example of Job, right? Sometimes the source of our suffering is a mystery, isn't something that we fully understand or can even point exactly to. Sometimes God allows suffering for reasons beyond our ability to comprehend. And so in all of these ways, we reckon, we, we see that when you put all this together, this isn't just a when we suffer question, it's an as we suffer reality every day.
Yeah, so it sounds like basically we're in a situation when over the last two sessions, we've seen that our, we have a heart that's constantly trying to worship ourselves through various idols, and we're in a world that is making all of this harder, that's shaking the water bottle in like a ton of different ways. So there's never really a time when we're not suffering and at least tempted towards some kind of sinful response in bigger, small ways. So this is like the, this is the constant in our life, daily we're doing this. So then what, so what do we do about it? Like what, what, what do we do to navigate these difficulties in a fallen world?
Well, this is what's so amazing about our God. I mean, there's so many things, right? This is also what's so incredible about the gospel. God addresses both our suffering and our sin through the good news of Jesus Christ and its implications for our lives and our eternities. He addresses sin by, by acknowledging it, by forgiving it, and sanctifying us from it. And, and I mean, in short, he, he deals with sin by getting rid of it. However, he deals with suffering a little differently. Because sometimes getting rid of it isn't part of the equation in this lifetime and in this fallen world. So I think we can summarize how God addresses suffering in our lives by recognizing that, that in His word, He calls us to, similarly to what we talked about last, last week. He, He calls us to first acknowledge suffering. Just like we acknowledged the depth of our sin in, in the last session, we need to acknowledge the reality and depth of our suffering. Secondly, be again reminded of gospel truth. And we're gonna talk about what that looks like, and so maybe just a couple of examples of the gospel truth that we need to be reminded of. And, and thirdly, be instructed in gospel commands. Even in the midst of our suffering, God gives us a description for what living faithfully and glorifying Him in the midst of our fallen world looks like.
Okay, let's, let's walk through those one by one. Those seem worth exploring if this is kind of our, our daily experience. We need to be acquainted with these. So Matt, can, can you start us off?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the, the first kind of thing that Scott mentioned is this idea of acknowledging suffering. And, and just like in our, our last session, we talked about this idea of identifying our idolatries or our self worship, that there's a kind of a first step of identifying these realities in our lives. And acknowledging the reality of suffering is, is really the first step in, in how that God kind of prescribes for us to deal with the reality of this in our, in our lives. And one of the things that I love about the Bible and, and just God's truthfulness is that God doesn't shy away from this in His word. He doesn't shy away from the reality of suffering. In fact, scripture over and over again references the real acknowledgement of the presence of suffering in this world and the pain that it actually inflicts upon us. You're actually given in scripture real graphic pictures of what it looks like to live in a fallen world. I, I think about Romans eight, where Paul writes, "The creation was subjected to futility, not willingly, but because of Him who subjected it, and hope that the creation itself will be set free from its bondage to corruption and obtain the freedom of the glory of the children of God. For we know that the whole creation has been groaning together in the pains of childbirth until now." Paul kind of calls upon the most intense of human experiences, the pain of childbirth, to describe the kind of just brokenness and futility. Well, okay, childbirth is not futile, but the brokenness and the pain that comes from the reality of suffering in this world. And he, he talks about that in most intensive human experiences to describe the reality and help us understand the acknowledgement of what the reality of suffering is. You see this in the Psalms a lot as well. Psalm 55 talks about, "My heart is in anguish within me. The terrors of death have fallen upon me. Fear and trembling come upon me, and horror overwhelms me." There's this just powerful and emotive acknowledgement and identification of the reality of suffering that is, is kind of the first step in this process.
And, and then similarly to what we talked about in the last session, just as we, as after we start with acknowledging our suffering, God then addresses that suffering by reminding us of gospel truth, right? And, and the gospel truth, they're just, I mean, we could look at a whole host of different examples, but just to look at a couple of examples of the gospel truth that God teaches us that in the midst of, and it addresses our suffering. One of the truths that God reminds us of is that we're called to remember that God is with us in the midst of our suffering. I think suffering can tempt us to believe that He's not with us, right? That He's not here, He feels far away, He feels like He doesn't care. But we start by remembering that God is with us in the midst of our suffering. And not only is He with us, but He can relate to the pain, the discouragement, and the isolation that, that we're experiencing, right? He's walked in our shoes as a human. He, He was betrayed, He was abandoned, He was unloved, just as we are. We, we don't, we don't have a God who's distant and unknown and so other that He, that He, He can't really understand what our life is like. We, we don't have, we have a God who knows exactly how we are feeling and has experienced that same suffering, and particularly in the person and work of Jesus, right? This is what makes this gospel truth. His, and, and that's, that God, that His spirit dwells in us, and He's an ever-present, He's ever-present with us, no matter how distant or unknown our experience may tempt us to feel like He is, right? Hebrews four says, "For we do not have a high priest who's unable to sympathize with our weakness, but one who in every respect has been tempted as we are yet without sin." So what does that mean? What does the fact that He can relate mean? Like how does that encourage us to miss of our suffering? Well, it goes on in verse 16. "Well, let us then with confidence draw near to the throne of grace, that we can receive mercy and find grace to help in time of need." I think similarly, this is why Psalm 23 in the Old Testament is such a famous comfort, right? This is such a, I mean, Psalm 23 is probably the Bible passage, Bible chapter known and repeated by more people across the world. Why, why is it so popular? Well, it's so popular because of its sentiments, but why it's so, so popular, why it's so powerful is because it's true, right? It's true that the Lord is my shepherd, and that because of that, I'll never be in want. It's true that He makes me lay down in green pastures, that He leads me beside still waters, that He restores my soul, that He leads me in paths of righteousness for His name's sake, and that even though it's true, that even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I don't have to fear evil. Why? It's just because you are with me. Your rod and your staff, they comfort me. Your presence and your power with me comfort me. And so one of the gospel truths we need to be reminded of in the midst of our suffering is that no matter how big or small or regular or odd it is, God is always with us in the midst.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's so powerful to be hit with and reminded of that truth in the midst of suffering. And I think another kind of element to that is the idea that God has purpose and promise in the midst of that, in the midst of that suffering that is true no matter what. No matter how hard, no matter how difficult the situation gets, no matter what the situation looks like, no matter what the suffering looks like, there are truths, there are promises and purposes that God has given us that are, are true, that we can rejoice in even in the midst of suffering. I mean, think about the, the command of rejoice always that includes in the midst of suffering. And it's just this difficult thing to do, but the reality is that it's, it's something that, that when we're reminded of gospel truth, we're able to do. We can rejoice always, no matter what, as a Christian in our identity in Christ. First Peter talks about how, First Peter four says, "Beloved, do not be surprised at the fiery trial when it comes upon you to test you, as though something strange were happening to you. But rejoice, insofar as you share Christ's suffering, that you may also rejoice and be glad when His glory is revealed." So there's a sense of sharing in what Christ has suffered in this world that identifies us with Christ in this deep and powerful way that allows us to rejoice even when it hurts, that we can hold on to the promise that we're united with Christ and that, that unites us and connects us with Him in this deep and profound way that, that allows us even to possibly rejoice in the midst of suffering. We also can rejoice in the eternal promises of God. I think again about First Peter, First Peter one says, "Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. According to His great mercy, He's caused us to be, He's caused us to be born again to a living hope through the resurrection of Jesus Christ from the dead to an inheritance that is imperishable, undefiled, unfading, kept in heaven for you who by God's power are being guarded through faith for salvation, ready to be revealed in the last time. In this you rejoice, though now for a little while, if necessary, you've been grieved by various trials, so that the tested genuineness of your faith, more precious than gold that perishes, though it is tested by fire, may be found to result in praise and glory and honor at the revelation of Jesus Christ." I think we talked about this passage in the, the Bible section of the discipleship pathway podcast. I'm, I'm pretty sure we did, but it's just such a powerful picture of what it looks like to rejoice in God's eternal promises, the imperishable, unfading, undefiled inheritance that has been won for us in Christ in the midst of suffering, though we are experiencing this really grievous trial. And it doesn't say this trial is small and insignificant. It's that you're grieved by various trials, some of them big, some of them small. Some of them may be things that we talked about already in this class or in this session, but some of them maybe not, things that we couldn't even imagine, the trials that you're going through. In the midst of this, there's this holding on to and reminding, being reminded of God's promises about eternity and the hope that's laid up, up for us and the, the security of that in Christ. I think it's such a powerful, a powerful element of what it means to rejoice in God's eternal promises in the midst of suffering. You can also even, again, in the context of being reminded of gospel truth, this idea of rejoicing in God's temporal promises, that God makes promises that even in the midst of suffering, there's things that God's doing in our hearts and producing in our hearts endurance and holiness in us. James one says, "Count it all joy, my brothers, when you meet trials of various kinds." Again, various kinds of trials. "For you know that the testing of your faith produces steadfastness." There's this sense in which there are even temporal benefits in one sense to this suffering that God is working out in you that allows you to really hold on to these gospel, these gospel truths and be reminded of these gospel truths in a way that allows you to even rejoice in the midst of suffering. And there's this, I think another element of that rejoicing comes And there's, uh, uh, this, I think another element of that rejoicing comes, um, in the temporal promises that we see in Romans five. It says, "Through him we've also obtained access by faith into this grace in which we stand, and we rejoice in hope of the glory of God. More than that, we rejoice in our sufferings, knowing that suffering produces endurance, and endurance produces character, and character produces hope. And hope does not put us to shame, because God's love has been poured into our hearts through the Holy Spirit who's been given to us." That God, even in the midst of our suffering, can produce hope, um, and endurance and character in us, such that we can just rejoice in God's promises in the midst of this suffering, um, holding fast to these, uh, gospel truths that, um, we need to be reminded of, uh, that give us hope in the midst of all of this pain.
Yeah. I mean, it's such incredible truth, right? That God redeems and promises to redeem everything that we're experiencing, even our suffering, by infusing it with purposes, by using it, um, in all these different ways. And that he's using it all these different ways and that he is a present, uh, protector, that he's a present comforter in the midst of our, our suffering as well. I mean, just, just a couple of the, the pictures of how, of things that we need to be reminded of and that one another, that others need to be reminded of in the midst of, of our suffering. And so if, if we're going to, uh, address the, the fallen world in which we live and the, all the different effects of it, we, we start by acknowledging the reality of it, right? We can't just pretend it's not there, um, just as we acknowledge the reality and depth of our sin. And then we, we need to be reminded of gospel truth, like we've now looked at. But the process still isn't done until we step forward in light of that truth and manifest the transformation that God is bringing about, right? Even in our, just like we talked about in the last session, even in our suffering, God describes ways that, that he wants us to live that glorify him. Like suffering isn't the, uh, excuse to no longer worship or glorify God. Suffering is the context in which we are called to worship and glorify God. And so we're called forward into, into that, in addition to acknowledging suffering and being reminded of gospel truth. There, even in the midst of suffering, there are gospel commands that we're called to manifest. Again, not harshly, but as God describes, okay, how would I respond? How should I respond? How should I live with a God who loves me so much, who never has abandoned me, who's always there, who's working his glorious purposes through my suffering, who's redeeming even the most painful parts of my life for my ultimate good and for his glory? How, how do I live with that God? How am I called to live? And I sense, essentially, the, the gospel commands that describe how we're called to live in the midst of our suffering can be summed up in the call simply to trust him. To trust him and to live out a life of trust in him in the midst of this. Now, now this is different. I, I want to, this is different than when somebody's suffering and you simply tell them, hey, you, you just need to trust God. Right? Like, I think so many people have been actually hurt and discouraged by just a callous application of like, well, what, what do you need to do? You just need to trust God. You just need to trust, trust God here. But I guess the point I would make is that the problem with that moment, the problem with that interaction isn't the content, it's the delivery. Right? That, yeah, that's, that's not how you're called to minister to or care for a brother and sister. That's simplistic and can be utilized uncaringly.
A truth bomb.
Yes, a truth bomb that can do more damage than good. But just because you use the truth as a bomb, doesn't mean it's the wrong truth. I mean, and I, I think this, this applies and we, we see it even in a great example. This is Romans eight, 28 and 29, which is, can, can be used as a truth bomb, right? And the, the truth that we, we know that for those who love God, all things, including our suffering, work together for good for those who are called according to his purpose. Right? We can use that as a truth bomb, like, hey, you just need to know that God works all the things for good. So chin up, right? He uses a truth bomb. But just because it's misused and not used compassionately, kindly and patiently in the right moment, that doesn't make it the wrong truth. This is actually incredibly powerful truth and one that we do need to be reminded of regularly, that God uses, he promises to use everything in our lives. The job you didn't get, the child you lost, the traffic you sit in every day. All things for your ultimate good. And what's your ultimate good? Well, he goes on to describe in verse 29, this is exactly what we've been talking about, that those whom he foreknew, he also predestined to become conformed to the image of his son, to grow in Christlikeness. Right? And this is, it's this heart work and that, that suffering then becomes the context, is the context for the heart work that God is doing in us that makes us more and more and more like Christ. There, there's just, I mean, on, on this point and just the, the call to trust God, I, there, there's just a couple of quotes. I actually want to utilize from, and to share with you from Jerry Bridges' classic book on trusting God. And the reason I want to share this with you, trusting God's actually an incredible book to help, uh, an incredible resource to just help equip you for the, and to be in the midst of suffering and particularly equip you kind of ahead of like those moments of tragic suffering we experience in our lives. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily the book I'd hand to somebody in the midst of tragic suffering, right? I mean, because it can, uh, because, uh, it, it can be interpreted as, I think, unkind in that sense. But I think the truths are so powerful that if you, if I can even expose them to you, you to them now, I think they're going to prepare you well in this call that we have to, to trust God. And he, Bridges writes, "Not only are the willful malevolent acts of other people under God's sovereign control, so also are the mistakes and failures of other people. Did another driver go through a red light, strike your car, send you to the hospital with multiple fractures? Did a physician fail to detect your cancer in its early stages when it could have been treatable? Did you end up with an incompetent instructor in a very important course in college or an inept supervisor who blocked your career in business? All of these circumstances are under the controlling hand of our sovereign God, who is, he promises to work them out in our lives for our good," end quote. And then Bridges also goes on to talk about what it means to, to take hold of that reality, take hold of that truth and to live in light of it. And it, and it comes in the form of us living and acting in, out our trust in God. And he, he writes this, he says, "In order to trust God, we must always view our adverse circumstances through the eyes of faith, not of sense. And just as the faith of salvation comes through hearing the message of the gospel, so the faith to trust God in adversity comes through the word of God alone." Scripture teaches us three essential truths about God, truths we must believe. And I, I'd add cling to if we were to trust him in adversity. And they are that God is completely sovereign, God is infinite in wisdom, and he is perfect in love," end quote. And I think that that reality of who God is, and then really I think that the, the gospel demonstrates in a uniquely powerful way in each one of our lives as Christians, that God is completely sovereign. This has been his plan for salvation, that he is infinite in wisdom. It's a better plan than we would have come up with. And he is perfect in love, because he sent his son for us. And just as it is true in the gospel moment, it's also true in the rest of our lives as we navigate, um, the process of becoming more and more like Christ in the midst of this fallen world.
And so we acknowledge suffering. That's the way that we admit what's going on in our life, both big and small. We, uh, remember that God's with us and rejoice in his purposes. That's the way that we sort of are reminded of the gospel truth. And then we rest in God's sovereignty and his love. And that's the way we're instructed in those gospel commands as we walk through, kind of like Matt said, big suffering and little suffering. And so whether we're sitting in traffic or we are in the midst of something really devastating, we not only can admit that that's happening, but we actually are given tools to deal with it that are deeper and richer and, uh, more thorough than anything else we could turn to. And in that sense, in the midst of a fallen world, we don't have to turn to idolatry, uh, in order to cope. We actually can turn to worshiping God. And so the downward spiral of, uh, you know, idolatry leading to being sinned against and fallenness leading to sinful responses can be turned and inverted into essentially an upward spiral is what I'm hearing. Where now the things that happened to us actually can galvanize more worship in our hearts. And so as we root out idolatry and self-worship, we are also using that same gospel reminder and gospel command, uh, to deal with our fallen world. We just get more and more joy out of worshiping God for who he is, even when difficult things of various sizes happen to us.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's what we're talking about. I mean, this is the reason why we're talking about this stuff at all. We want to walk with God and that's what it looks like. Heart work is a piece of having a relationship with God, this idea of internalizing and applying what God said. And so in this session, we talked about the difficulties of living in a fallen world. We talked about the three steps we can take to address those difficulties, which mirrored the three steps we take to deal with, uh, self-worship and idolatry. And as always, we want to leave you with some practical questions leaving this session. First, where have you found yourself blaming circumstances for a lack of growth? Instead of seeing them as a place where you could grow, a context out of which you can grow? Where have you been blaming the smashed water bottle for the water that's inside of it? Second, how can you acknowledge suffering more regularly, more consistently, so that you can address it more consistently and more regularly? In other words, how can you notice and acknowledge the suffering around you in a way that leads more to that upward spiral than to a downward spiral? And then third, what truths about God's relationship to suffering and our fallen world? What truths about those things do you need to be reminded of? Of the things that were listed today, all the promises God gives, his sovereignty, his love, his purposes? What of those things stands out the most to you as something that you need to be reminded of as you walk through the various trials that we experience every day? So we leave you with those questions and we look forward to our last session with you next time.